Well, it is 7:02. And let's call to order the reading of the Village of Tibbely Board of Trustees here in the historic West DePister Hall. Let's start with the Plenary Agents. To the way. And please, leaders, to the way. The leaders of the state of America and the chief representative for which it stands, one nation, a government of independence, liberty, justice for all. Should we start with the village furniture board?
We shall. So in the past month, there were 500 trash tags sold. Two payrolls were processed by Treasurer Day. Laura Gale Tyler, our deputy clerk, continues to assist in planning and zoning boards. Upcoming Monday, December 26th, along with Monday, January 2nd, the clerk's office will be closed to observe Christmas and New Year's Day. And just another little tidbit that I had mentioned last month, that with the fire department, we were partnering with the U.S. Marines and Toys for Tots. And I have to say thank you to everyone who donated because there was really an overwhelming response. My car was completely full that I took to Hyde Park. So it was really quite incredible. So thank you to everyone who had donated. And on behalf of Bonnie and Laura Gale and myself in the clerk's office, we would like to wish everyone safe and happy holidays.
Thank you so much. All right. We have minutes to approve. Does anybody have a chance to take a look?
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion? Oh goodness, to approve the minutes of the November 16th regular meeting minutes, the December 8 special meeting, and the December 14 workshop minutes. Seconded by trustee Vagino, seconded by trustee Azrati. Treasurer's report. This month, we had $246,672.12 out of the payout from the general fund and $6,760.90. A total of $253,431.2. Can I get a motion to accept the treasurer's reports?
So do you?
Led by trustee Mangieri.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Azrati. And how about a motion to pay the bills? So moved. Oh, all right. Moved by Azrati, seconded by Mangieri. Onto a zoning report.
And I don't see one.
Let's see.
Is one there?
No, actually, no.
No?
Zoning. Great. No, we didn't zonify any.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but there is no required.
Do you want to just make one up? All right, we'll save it. So do we have any public comment on the agenda items for the evening, which will be a presentation by Ty and Bond regarding lead at the former water tower site, a resolution for budget modifications, and we will be accepting the Tidley Fire Company officers listed? I see no public interest in that. So moving on, the next board meeting will be held Wednesday, January 18th, 2022, 2023, right?
Yes.
Yeah, 2023. At 7:00 PM, workshop is 6:00 PM here at the historic West DePister Hall. And our regular workshop will be on January 11th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. So let's have a presentation. Brandi Nelson.
How are you?
Thank you for coming.
You are welcome. Did you get our report in your packet already? If not, I have copies.
No.
I don't have those.
And maybe if for the viewers at home, can you just explain a little about what we're looking for and why and all that?
You got one? For your records? All right. So good evening, everyone. My name is Brandi Nelson, Vice President and Project Manager with High and Bond. And we do some consulting for the village on kind of a as-muted basis. Recently, while closing out the project with the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority for the water tower, the project manager for that project, Dan Valentine, who I think some of you have probably met, was trying to get all the closeout paperwork from the contractor. And among the materials in that closeout paperwork were some samples that the contractor had taken prior to demolishing the water tower at its location in Memorial Park. They collected, not because of a contractual requirement, but more just for their own purposes, samples prior to demolition and samples after demolition at the location of the four legs of the water tower. And they did that sample work in September of 2021. They provided us the data in October of 2022. So when we received that data on behalf of the Water Waste Water Authority, we observed that both the pre and post demolition samples had levels of lead in them that are elevated above what the state recommends for what's called unrestricted use, so residential use, park use, et cetera. So we said, hmm, that's curious. We should know more. We did not observe their sampling, so we didn't really know how they collected the sample. And so we brought that to the county's attention, we brought it to your attention, and this board authorized us to do some investigation. The objective of the investigation was to determine the horizontal, so you know, the aerial extent of any lead, high lead levels, and then the vertical extent, so the depth into the soil of that, so that we can make a decision about whether or not any corrective actions need to be made. I'll back up just a half a step. When this board authorized us to do the investigation, at that time, not knowing the lead levels, we had recommended that you install some snow fence just to exclude people from the area immediately around the water tower, because we just didn't know what we were going to be getting into. So we conducted fieldwork sampling in late November, November 22nd. And that work consisted of screening the soils with an X-ray fluorescence machine. So that's a machine that we can put a sample of soil into, and it can give us an immediate reading of lead level. And then where we saw lead levels trending in one direction or another, we would collect what are called confirmation samples. And those confirmation samples were then sent to a laboratory for analysis at a certified lab. And what we did was we looked specifically at the area beneath the water tower in about 100-foot by 100-foot area in a 20-by-20 grid. We also took samples in the 0-to-6-inch depth, so that's your surface soils, and then in the 6-to-12-inch, which is the most of surface soils. And because lead is a naturally occurring substance and exists as an element, we also collected background samples, so samples away from the water tower site that we wanted to identify as the site-specific, the Tibbely background level, okay, so that we had something to compare to. In addition, just given the use of the park, we collected a sample at the playground and also at the community garden. Okay? So that was the extent of the sampling. The samples were, so it is in your packet, a little figure that shows where the samples were collected. It's written in Appendix A, so it's about 400 pages into the packet. So we can, I think, we provided a PDF copy to the village if the village wants to make this available on the website. So samples were sent to the lab for analysis, and the results of the analysis found that in general, the majority of the samples were below the state's recommended levels for unrestricted use. So I think that's the good news. The other good news is that our environmental engineering team that was out on site, they made observation of the condition of the area beneath the water tower. Lead exposure is typically obtained through ingesting soil particles or breathing soil particles in. And so if you have bare soil, that can create a risk pathway. In the case of the park, the turf grass is pretty dense out there, and they didn't observe a lot of bare spots, nor did they see any paint chips, which we suspect that the source of the lead is probably from paint chips slipping off the tower over the years that that tower was there. So the summary of data is in Appendix B. And on that page is a summary table of all the samples that were collected. And of the samples collected, only two were above the state's recommended level. Both occurred in surface soils and both occurred at locations close to water tower legs. We have been in touch with the DEC about this matter. They don't generally regulate a site like a park where water towers come down, but they've been advised of the approach the village was taking as far as sampling. And I told them we were presenting this information to you guys tonight, and they'll receive a copy, and they will provide any comment to us. But based on just my conversation with them, they didn't think any action would need to be taken as far as any sort of corrective measures at the park. You know, that's our conclusion as well. We don't believe you need to move forward with any corrective action. The majority of the samples are well below what the state recommends as far as unrestricted use levels. And let's see, what else? I know there was one other point that just completely went out of my head. Oh, and the snow fence, if it's still there, I think you could safely take it down without any concern.
Okay. Well, so we're just going to do the meeting, right? Nobody else, does anybody else weigh in on this?
So we talked to the county health department. They have no concern unless people are out there with shovels or spoons eating the dirt. But they said, no, it generally doesn't fall to them. And the DEC said that they would open a file and send a letter, you know, either concurring or not concurring with us, but it sounded verbally like they were going to concur with us on the recommended.
Okay.
Presumably, the grass is a pretty good mitigation.
As far as having a dense grass cover there, it is, yeah. It prevents contact with the dirt, which is why we have good for grass, because we don't want many.
Just intent, spooning in hell.
Correct. You know, I think the community may be concerned about the community garden, because that is a place where the soil is bare and you're in contact with it, you need rubber gloves. That sample was 96.6 hertz per million lead. The state's recommended level is 400, so it's significantly low.
Safety.
Yeah. And the playground was even lower. It was only 4 hertz per million, and again, the state's level is 400.
That's very good. That's great. We did the right thing and.
So are there any other recommendations in terms of management of that area going forward?
We don't have, I mean, this data would suggest that the area falls within the state's unrestricted use, so no restrictions on the property.
Good question.
Do we have a understanding of why we didn't get the soil samples until 13 months after they had been taken?
The contractor was just very slow to respond. Very slow. But all of that is closed out. The county, DCWWA, did not have any comment on this matter either, so we're outside of the weirdly normally operates, familiar with that proceed.
Gotcha. Does anybody have any questions for Brandi?
Just thank you.
Thank you so much. It's really helpful because people hear lead and go, ah!
Yeah, no, it can be, for sure. I think he did the right thing. But I think I had spoken with the mayor before he left last week, and he was most concerned about the snow fence and whether or not that could come down. So if you want to have DPW take that down, I should be fine. All right. Okay. So our task is to close this out with the DEC, and then we'll report back to you.
Okay. Perfect. And we'll put it up on the website for everybody to take a look at. Great. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Nice to see you.
Our next budget lines. Let's see. Let's move the money. Well, it looks like we are moving $29,500 from the fund balance into the engineering lines, which makes sense because we have a lot of engineering to do. Let's get a roll call to accept these modifications. Trustee Azrati.
Aye.
Trustee Mangieri.
Aye.
Aye.
Did I also vote aye? Motion seconded. Oh, motion seconded first.
Okay. I move with the leadership.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. Aye.
Thank you, Robyn. Not ready for prime time over here. Okay, so next up, the Tidley Fire Company has elected officers for 2023. And first of all, thank you to everybody who serves in the fire company. Having failed myself in their services, both emergency services and fire services many times over the years, I just want to say thank you for all that you do and all that you do for the village and the greater surrounding areas. So 2023 Tibbely Fire Company officers, our chief is Joshua Coons, First Assistant Chief Mark Hildenbrand, Second Assistant Chief Dylan Griffiths, Captain Michael Blum, First Lieutenant Aiden Miller, Second Lieutenant Hadley O'Connor. Rescue squad, First Lieutenant Cheryl Hildebrand, Hillbrand, sorry, Second Lieutenant Olivia Couture, Fire Police Captain Glenn Baker, First Lieutenant Robin Bruno, Second Lieutenant Thomas Chrissy Senior. Administration, we have President Wayne Hildenbrand, Vice President Mark Hildenbrand, Treasurer Harold Ramsey, Recording Secretary Justin Sella, Corresponding Secretary Robin Bruno, Board of Directors Ralph Torchev, Robin Bruno, Glenn Baker, and Justin Sella. Can I get a motion and a second to, what are we doing, accepting the Tidley Fire Company officers?
I move that the board accept the slate of officers presented by the fire department.
Seconded. Okay. That is moved by trustee Azrati, seconded by trustee Mangieri. Again, thank you so much. Okay, now I say, the next board meeting will be held Wednesday, January 18th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, workshop 6:00 PM at the historic West DePister Hall. Regular workshop, January 11th, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Trustee reports.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to report to the assembled that this is my final board meeting. I have submitted my resignation to the mayor effective December 31st. And if you'll indulge me, I'd like to just give you a little bit of a flavor of the 16 years that I have served on this board, because it's been quite a ride. I started out, Mark Molinaro was the mayor at the time that this occurred, and he resigned to go to the state assembly and appointed Tom Cordier mayor. Tom had been the deputy mayor for a long time. And Tom appointed me to replace Tom Cordier. And I think this board is remarkable for a little village like we have. The things that we've accomplished is, to me, to my mind, really pretty special. We're supported by great engineering, good legal team. But in addition to that, places like the Cornell Extension find us an interesting place to do studies on, and the county has assisted us on a lot of things. So the result is that we have gotten CDBG grants or CFA lead, they change their name all the time, but basically, it's federal money that is administered by the county to do things that are sort of on a broader scale for improving the government of the area. And we got, I think, three or four to improve the walkability of the village, which was basically an idea that if you improved walkability, you reduced the use of carbon-driven vehicles, and you've made a contribution to the climate. And so we redid the sidewalks all the way around the park, up and down in the business area, and we even went all the way down to the waterfront. That doesn't mean there aren't some sidewalks that need improving, but you know, we do it bit by bit. We've set into motion that transfer the management of our water and sewer systems to professional management by the county Waste Water Authority. The thing driving that was that Jimmy Simmons was getting older. Jimmy Simmons had worked as the water commissioner for three decades, four decades. He knew all of the ways that you could use bubble gum and paper clips to keep things working. But one of the first things that happened when I was here was that one of the four sewer tanks actually came out of the ground. It was like a beached barge. And it was because we had an ice storm, and the ice storm cut off the electricity. And when the electricity is out, the sewage doesn't get pumped from one tank to another in its process of being filtered. And pretty soon, one of those tanks was empty, and it just spilled out of the ground. And you get intimacy with these things. I used to say that, I love being able to say this, that I was the overseer of the water and sewer department. I was the most recent overseer of it, and the first one was Eleanor Roosevelt. We've expanded the village staff while improving its fiscal health. We have an excellent treasurer. We get rave reviews when the county reviews us, the controller reviews us on most occasions because we've been able to put away a prudent amount for the fund balance, which we use for things like the engineering report. And at the same time, we have not raised taxes above the 2% cap that Governor Cuomo imposed for the last decade. We have, we spent a lot of time working on our waterfront. Our waterfront is not something that you get really excited about, except that we have one. And when I arrived, we were still negotiating with CSX to actually have ownership of the land along the waterfront. Now, we have it on both sides of the track, but we do have physical ownership of our shoreline, which is important because it means we have potential access. We don't have access, but there's still that option. Yeah. And we are one, if you go, if you look at scenic Hudson's plan to have access all along the Hudson River, we are one of the spots that fills a hole so that people can kayak up or down the river and have a place to come in. We have replaced our water tower. That was a big deal. The reason that we needed to replace it was because the lead mitigation that was required of the old water tower exceeded the cost of that, exceeded the cost of a new water tower. And the one we got was three times the size, which actually means that we can meet the fire needs. We have enough water to put out the fire in the village, which was, we're now on a standard that the state requires. We have replaced the firehouse, and I want you to know that that wasn't the first time the firehouse burned down. But, and we're now talking about an expansion and we're about 60% of the way along, I think, to raising the funds to make that happen. One of the things I'm most excited right now is that we've actually done a survey of drainage problems in Tibbely. For those of you who are new, you may not realize that Tibbely is place well that has no place to drain. And so drainage is a really serious problem. But just this survey of it resulted in some actions that we were doing with the roads anyway, that we've already resolved a couple of chronic problems. And I know this board's going to take that forward and do more with it. One of the things I got to do while I was on the board was participate on the Community Preservation Board. In 2008, the town of Red Hook passed a Community Preservation Act. And that, I think it was 2008, it might have been 2007, that act collected a tax on the sales of properties whose value exceeded the median property values. It was a tax on whatever that excess was of 2%. And I don't know the exact number, but it has collected several million dollars from that tax. And with that, it has preserved farmland. You may not know it, but the town of Red Hook is 30% of its acreage is operating farms. And that amounts to about 9,000 acres. And with the Community Preservation Fund, we probably added 3,000 of those acres to preservation, which means that character of the community will be forever agricultural. And that lends a great deal to its livability, the open spaces and all those. We go back to Cornell. So Cornell comes to this place, and they take a look at it, and they realize that it's got all of these farms that are forever preserved and that are pretty much contiguous. They draw a circle from the Tibbely area, the northeast corner down to the southwest down to the southeast corner of Red Hook. It turns out that that connectivity lends to biodiversity because it is undeveloped land or unbothered land or open land that critters can walk through. That kind of biodiversity reduces the number of white-footed mice because you've got critters that eat them and keep the profit in. You may wonder why we want to get rid of these sweet little creatures, but it's because they are the primary carrier of lime ticks. So that biodiversity really has an immediate impact on the health, literally, the health of the community. We got to celebrate this last year, our centennial. Our Madam Deputy Mayor was very instrumental in making sure we knew what had happened in the last 150 years and that we probably celebrated that. And we still have those little QR codes, right, where you can go in and read about all of those occasions. We celebrated as a separate thing, the 70th anniversary of the UN Declaration of Universal Human Rights, because Eleanor, who was the author of that declaration, lives in Tibbely. And one of the buffs that celebrated that is here. And one of the buffs that celebrated that is here. We provide two weeks of summer camp every summer to our youngest residents and then happen, maybe except for one year. And we've reinvented a whole lot of festivals, Winter Fest, the Easter egg, and street painting, and many other seasonal festivals. And what's really fun for me is that we're honoring those residents who have called Tivoli home for generations. And we know who they are, and if you live here, you get to know who they are. And we also welcome those who find us from far reaches of the world and find the version of community that exists in this little, are we four square miles, two square miles?
One.
Yeah.
Two, max.
One square mile, one square mile. We've got four linear miles of road. So we're a little spot with a far reach and really, it's a wonderful place to live. And it is a place that recognizes the challenges that are faced in this century. And so I thank you for giving me the privilege of seeing those problems close up and personal.
Oh, my gosh. Well, Susan, I have to say you have the four, four qualities in particular that I think are so key to any sort of public service. And, you know, having served with you for the past, you know, good bunch of times.
A lot of years.
I have learned so much just from, from watching you. And so anyway, you are kind, you are pragmatic. You, you bring such fun to, to public service.
Yeah, you gotta talk about the water report.
You gotta talk about it. Humor, you know, because sometimes it's a grind, but the humor is there. And the other thing is that you do not suffer fools. And it's true, it's really true. Like you, you are so good at like finding the nut, you know? Finding the kernel of the problem, right? And like addressing it in a really like, just.
I have a sixth grade teacher who complimented me on that character and spit her out. Spit her out for a long time.
Serves you well, absolutely. And I have a statement to read from the mayor who could not be here. This will just take a minute, so if you could just talk amongst yourselves. Do you have a trustee report?
I can read the.
Why don't you read?
Well, I will say it's been a pleasure to get to meet you. I've only been on the board for two years, and you have been an inspiration. All those things that Emily said, I, I've learned quite a bit from you, so I appreciate it.
I learned quite a bit from you, actually.
So I will read, I, you know, because Emily's out here, I'm going to also read the police report. So this month, we had $1,145 in fines, which is the most I've ever seen, $633 in surcharges, $0 in civil fees, and for a total of $1,778 collected. Most of them are parking stop sign running, which I run personally, very satisfying. It's a, it's a big peeve of mine, that intersection, so it's, it's pleased to see that. So we have been engaged with the Red Hook Police for a while, a few months, and this month, we had a total of 14, I'm sorry, for November, we had a total of 14 incidents, 22 uniform traffic tickets, three parking tickets, and zero arrests. So that's a.
No, just repeating. Okay, so. Picture Joel.
I, I got it.
I regret that I cannot be present for trustee Susan Azrati's final board meeting this evening. Her 16-year tenure on the village board is one for which we are all deeply grateful. During the 12 years that I have been privileged to serve with her, Susan has been an inspiring colleague, invaluable mentor, and a cherished friend. I would be preparing to miss her terribly if I didn't know she will still be down the street, and I count on seeing her often. Susan, I wish you the very best in your time as a private citizen in Tivoli. Well-served and well-deserved. According to village law, when there is a vacancy in an unexpired term on the village board trustees, the mayor is authorized to appoint another qualified individual to serve in a major of said term. After much reflection and careful consideration, I am pleased to announce that I am appointing Bill Schilling of Montgomery Street to fill this vacancy. Bill has been serving on the Tivoli Planning Board, and I know he cares deeply about protecting and enhancing the quality of life we endure in our village. I want to thank Bill for accepting this appointment. I know I speak for the entire board when I say how much I look forward to working with him and all that he will contribute to the good governance of our village. Trustee Bill Schilling will assume his new position effective January 1st.
Good.
Ah, Susan. I wanted to say something. First, I apologize that I had to step out. But I want to say thank you to you because you were talking about all the wonderful things that you were part of when you became a trustee. But way before that, you were a member of the community, and you are one of the founding mothers, I guess you could say, of the Tivoli Street Beaning Festival, which is my favorite festival of all. And a little piece of my heart is for you because of that, because it brings so much joy to everybody in the village, and it's been, just people look forward to it. And you really were like a, you know, like so important in that part of like getting the chalk and getting the funds and it's, you know, everything. It's, it's not hard or not easy to throw an event. I mean, I threw an Easter party, and I was like, what the hell am I doing? And, you know, there she is painting the streets and, you know, getting volunteers and everything. It's, it's a lot of work, and you really have to love what you do because, you know, it's, it's volunteers and it's community that, you know, keeps it, you know, in check. And you have really gone above and beyond your duties.
You know, that was the first thing that I was asked to do. And it was about three days before the festival was going to happen. And I was supposed to raise the money for it. So I just started walking up and down the street and asking people for money, and they gave it to me. I, I finished walking down the street, I had $1,000. What's this festival? If people just handed the money to a stranger.
You must have looked trustworthy.
But it's, it's, and it was a festival that was started by Linda Murphy, and it was something that people really liked. And that's Tivoli for you, they just handed the money.
Well, and you've also been a tremendous steward of the LoSa program. We have counted that.
I don't know if you all are familiar with this program, but we have a volunteer fire department of about 60 firefighters, which, given their size, is really remarkable. You're not allowed to pay them because they have a special tax exemption. You know, all kinds of things would happen if you paid them. And by the way, you wouldn't be able to afford them. That's, that's the other part. So you want to keep them as volunteers, but you also want to acknowledge the years that they put into it. So the state of New York created a law that allowed communities to award a service award annually to firefighters who were sort of gave more than, that, who, who went to all of the, or a lot of the incidents and, and got the training and attended board meetings and did all those things. And so we could, when they, they do all those things, earn those points, we are able to give them $500 a year, which goes into a retirement account. And when they retire, they get not only the, the award, but whatever earnings it's, it's made. And it's a pretty good program.
It's a pretty good program, and you've done an amazing job with it, so.
Thank you.
Even though you're not going to be trustee, it doesn't mean we're not going to see you, because I know. We're going to call you back here for workshops and. Side of our room, we're session.
Say no. You can say no now. I just encourage all of you out there to, to think about this, this job because especially if you're new or if you're newly retired or newly available, or even if you just have a kid, they'll be loved. Or two kids. It's, it's just a very rewarding experience.
Sweet 60. Do you have any trustee reporting? I think you got.
I ran the earlier. Oh, I was ready to, so I ran it too.
Okay, fine. Well, I just want to report that we have played Winter Fest. Thank you to the Tivoli Fire Department, thank you to the Tivoli Library, thank you to the Tivoli Hotel, available items, Tivoli Bakery, the, I'm going to get it wrong. What's the pottery studio?
I have no idea.
The Cone Zone, the new pottery studio around the corner to thrift a fight. And everybody who supported Winter Fest this year, every road, who did a lovely job with all the posters and Chad Lent and his horses, who just are such a hit every year. And let's see, they're so, just, you know, it's Tivoli, like so many people helped out and made it great. And there was a lot of happy kids who were just covered with frosting like I've never seen.
That was disgusting.
And I say that because I didn't have a dog in the fight.
There wasn't complaints, but the horses were gassy. Kids were complaining.
Kids were complaining?
That's awesome.
Oh, and thank you to Santa and to elves, of course. Oh, my gosh. So another, another great Winter Fest in the books. Thank you so much. And so happy holidays to everyone and happy end of 2022. Best wishes for 2023. And I would like to close this meeting with three cheers for trustee Azrati. In the most traditional fashion, I would like to say. Hip, hip, hooray! Hip, hip, hooray! Hip, hip, hooray!